Good afternoon, everybody. And Happy New Year. Welcome to the 2025 Plainfield Reorganization Meeting. The notice requirement provided for the Open Public Meetings Law has been satisfied. Notice was properly given, said notice having been transmitted to the Courier-News on December 17th, 2024, as well as posting the notice of this meeting in the City Clerk's office. At this point, we are all going to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by the Plainfield Fire Department Honor Guard. Please remain standing for the invocation, which will be led by Reverend Leandra Coley of New Covenant Church.
Our Assemblywoman, Linda Carter, thank you. Honorable municipal council members, business administrator, corporate counsel, municipal clerk, municipal staff, ladies and gentlemen, let us pray. God of all flesh, Creator and Sustainer of the universe, we come seeking your divine blessings on these, your servants. We give you thanks for bringing us this far. Thank you for endowing them with the abilities and passion to serve humanity and this great city. We pray you will give them wisdom, strength, and courage to do what is right and good for all citizens. May they put the interests of others above their own. Grant them the fortitude and the resilience to lead through challenging and difficult seasons. May they act with love to the unlovely and serve those with compassion, the compassion of Christ for the common good of all. God, we pray for their health. We pray for their health mentally, physically, emotionally, and spiritually. Enable them to serve in their fullest capacity without sickness, disease, or infirmity. We pray for every resident of this great city, that they will become aligned with the wisdom, the vision, and mission of our leaders, as they forge to build a better and wholesome community. God, we give you thanks, and we give you praise for the manifestation of these prayers in their lives, in the name of the one who died and rose again, Jesus the Christ, amen.
May be seated. Now move on to the reading of the certifications of election. The Board of County Canvassers of Union County does hereby determine that at an election held in the said county on the fifth day of November in the year 2024, Steve G. Hockaday, Esquire, was duly elected Councilman-at-Large for a four-year term in the city of Plainfield. Would Councilman Steve Hockaday please step forward to take the oath of office as Councilman-at-Large? The oath of office will be administered by Union County Superior Court Judge Dara Goldman.
Repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Steve Hockaday.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all of the duties.
Perform all of the duties.
Of the office required by me.
Of the office required by me.
Of the, as a member of the Plainfield City Council.
As a member of the Plainfield City Council.
Representing as Councilman-at-Large.
Representing as Councilman-at-Large.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
So help me, God.
So help me, God.
I do further solemnly swear.
I do further solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the Saint.
And allegiance to the Saint.
And to the governments.
And to the governments.
Established in the United States.
Established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me, God.
So help me, God. Thank you.
The Board of County Canvassers of Union County does hereby determine that an election held in the said county on the fifth day of November in the year 2024, Charles McCray was duly elected Councilman, Third Ward, for a four-year term in the city of Plainfield. Would Mr. McCray please step forward to take the oath of office as Councilman for the Third Ward? The oath of office will be administered by his brother, Reverend Reginald McCray.
Repeat after me and state your name. I.
I, Charles McCray.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform all the duties of the office.
And faithfully and justly perform all the duties of the office.
Required by me.
Required by me.
As a member of the Plainfield City Council.
As a member of the Plainfield City Council.
Representing the Third Board.
Representing the Third Ward.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me, God.
So help me, God.
I do further.
I do furtherly affirm.
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the Saint.
And allegiance to the Saint.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of people.
So help me, God.
So help me, God.
Congratulations to Councilman Hockaday and Councilman McCray. At this point, we will now have remarks from our Assemblywoman representing the 22nd Legislative District, Assemblywoman Linda S. Carter.
Morning, everybody, or afternoon. Happy New Year. On behalf of Senate President Nick Sweetary, Assemblywoman Kennedy, I want to say, wow, what a year it's been, but what a year it's going to be. It truly has been amazing. Mayor Mapp, council members, your administration, Plainfield members, family, and friends. Truly a pleasure to be here before you, and today marks not just the start of another year, but an opportunity to reflect on our shared journey, and also to recommit to the work of building a stronger, more vibrant Plainfield. Plainfield has always been my heart and my home. It's where my roots run deep, but most importantly, it's where my commitment to public service started. I am proud to represent you and stand alongside you as we continue to move our community forward. And that's what we are. We're family, we're friends, we are colleagues, we are individuals who live here in our town, and we want to work collectively together to make sure that we are moving it forward. And 2025 is the year that we're going to do that, Mayor. Please know that I will always be here for Plainfield, working with you, advocating for you, and striving to create opportunities for every family here in Plainfield. Thank you for your trust and your support you have given me over the years, but you know what? Let's make 2025 the year to remember for Plainfield. Happy New Year, everyone.
Thank you, Assemblywoman Carter. We will now have remarks from our honorable three-term mayor, Adrian O'Matt.
Well, hello, Plainfield. Let me begin by wishing each and every one of you a very happy, healthy, and prosperous The last year has been a wonderful year in our city, and I must tell you that our state, the state of the city by all measures, is very strong. We have accomplished a great deal this year. Our redevelopment, which is happening all across the city, continues to revitalize every corridor of our city, generating millions and millions of dollars in tax revenue that go directly to the bottom line to help stabilize our property taxes. And I don't know why my phone is recording, but it should not be. And I can tell you that this year, well, let me continue to focus on the past year in particular. Our crime has been down significantly and continues to go down each and every day because of the hard work and dedication of our men and women in the Plainfield Police Department. And we know that when crime is down, it means that our city is safer, and it leads to a better quality of life for everyone that's here. Also, some of you were there yesterday for what we call the Day of Reckoning, and there's always a day of reckoning. But yesterday, on North Avenue, we began the process of tearing down a blighted structure that has really been a stain on our city for decades. It's the warehouse that sits on North Avenue within feet of the Netherwood Trench Station. And so yesterday, we held a community event where we started to tear down that building. It will take about four to six weeks to bring down the complete structure, and that is so because there's asbestos on the eastern corner of the building, and that has to be removed first before the entire building can come down. And then what you will see rising from that same location is a warehouse that will employ numerous people from the city of Plainfield. But not only that, on the second level, there'll be recreational enhancements that will provide opportunities for all of our residents to enjoy wholesome recreation. There'll be a restaurant. It will be a place for people to come to from across the city and from outside of the city, and it's just a stone's throw away from our Netherwood Trench Station. So that is an exciting time. The residents of that neighborhood, they are very happy. One homeowner from across the street said, "I've been here for over 25 years, and I had to stare at that every single day, and no one should have to do that." And so we are going to eliminate that blight, and you will see rising from there something very different, very new, and what would be in the best interest of our city of Plainfield. I mentioned that there's a park who some on the city council might have discovered that for the first time on Cushion Road. It used to be a farm, and we've had some discussions with the county, and our goal is to create a decent recreational space there, because the Second Ward is the one ward in the city that doesn't really have a park. And we intend to make that into a park with the assistance of the county. The property is owned by the county, and to make sure that we have input from the community, we have sent letters to 1,000-plus homeowners within a half-mile radius of the site. And so there'll be community engagement, there'll be a charrette, and we will hear from the residents what they believe to be the best use for that site, and our goal is to make it into a decent recreational facility, well, not facility, but a park. We talked about crime being down. The Office of Homeless Prevention. So I have charged members of the team for several months to come up with a strategy, given the fact that we've had to displace some residents from their apartment buildings as a result of these structures being unsafe, and we thought it necessary for us to make sure that we do the right thing by the people of this city, and that is to not allow people to live in filthy, uninhabitable conditions. And so that sort of caused us to think hard about what we need to do about housing in the city of Plainfield. And to that end, we have decided that we're going to build over 1,000 new units of affordable housing, but beyond that, we want people to be able to stay in their homes, stay in their apartments. And so the team and I have been discussing for quite some time the creation of the Office of Homelessness Prevention. And that office, what will be housed in that office, will also be dealing and focusing on the complaints that we have heard loud and clear about rent and about how landlords treat some of their tenants. And so the Office of Homelessness Prevention would make sure that there are resources and that there's a place that people can come to at City Hall to make their case and to let us know what has been happening between them and their landlords as far as their rents are concerned. And so the Corporation Council and the Business Administrator have been researching this, getting information from a number of municipalities to make sure that we do this right. This should never be a knee-jerk reaction. And so we have put all of the time in to making sure that we gather the information, learn from how others are doing it, and so you will see at the next council meeting, we will present two ordinances. One will be to address rent, rent controls. The other one, because when you have rent control, you must have a rent level and board. And so this will provide, we will provide the ordinances to make this a legislative mandate that will allow the Office a legislative mandate that will allow the Office of Homeless Prevention to work with residents and to make sure that we address their concerns. We make sure we keep our landlords honest, and we make sure that no one goes homeless in this city when there is a way for us to intervene and to stop that from happening. And so that's what you will be seeing coming forward from this administration after studying that and working on it for several months. Now, one of the things that I want to make mention of is the fact that we have had the Plainfield House Music Festival for the last five years. And so we will continue. But I've mentioned that the person who has been instrumental in the formation, the creation of the Plainfield House Music Festival is none other than Lenny Kaufkart, Lenny Kaufkart, the son. And he was stricken with prostate cancer several years ago. He was very open about it, and he came to me with this idea of doing something to call attention to cancer, not only prostate cancer, but cancers in general. And so the House Music Festival has grown year after year, where we attract well over 10,000 people into the park. And so because this was the brainchild of Lenny Kaufkart, I've decided that we're going to rebrand and rename the Plainfield House Music Festival to the Lenny Kaufkart Plainfield House Music Festival. And that will happen beginning the next House Music Festival. It will be branded as the Lenny Kaufkart House Music Festival hosted by the city of Plainfield. So those are the few remarks that I have for you today. As you know, I normally give an expanded State of the City address where we go into a lot of things, giving you more details, and really enabling you to follow the path that this administration has been taken and that we continue to take in our efforts to move our city forward. So to all
One second. All right, all the duly elected members have been sworn in and have taken the oath of office. So I will now call the roll for the 2025 Plainfield City Council. Madam Deputy Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Briggs Jones.
Present.
Councilwoman Cherry.
Present.
Councilman Graham.
Present.
Councilman Hockaday.
Present.
Councilman McCray.
Present.
Councilwoman Sessoms.
Present.
Councilman Wyatt.
All members present in the quorum. Thank you, Madam Deputy Clerk. This time the floor is now open for nominations for Plainfield City Council President.
I'll take the nomination. I'll nominate myself, Terry Briggs Jones, for City Council
Is there a second on that nomination?
Second.
Is there any other nominations?
Yes, I nominate Steve Hockaday for City Council President.
Second.
Okay, I'll call the nominations in the order they received. This is, first nomination will be the nomination for Councilwoman Terry Briggs Jones to serve as Council President, seconded by Councilman Wyatt. Councilmembers Briggs Jones.
Yes.
Cherry.
No.
Graham.
No.
Hockaday.
No.
McCray.
No.
Sessoms.
No.
Wyatt.
Yes.
Two in favor, five opposed, then nomination fails. I'll now call the roll on the nomination of Steve G. Hockaday to serve as Council President. Councilmembers Briggs Jones.
No.
Cherry.
Yes.
Graham.
Yes.
Hockaday.
Yes.
McCray.
Yes.
Sessoms.
Yes.
Wyatt.
Yes.
Six in favor, one opposed. Let it be noted that Councilwoman Briggs Jones has changed her vote in the affirmative, so that is unanimous, and therefore it is declared that Councilman Hockaday has been duly elected as the 2025 City Council President. Would Councilman Hockaday please step forward to take the oath of office as Council President? Judge Govan.
If you have to me, I state your name.
I, Steve Hockaday.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all of the duties.
Perform all of the duties.
Of the office required by me.
Of the office required by me.
As City Council President.
As City Council President.
Of the Plainfield City Council.
Of the Plainfield City Council.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I do further solemnly swear.
I do further solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments.
And to the governments.
Established in the United States.
Established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you.[1061.25][1061.28](APPLAUSE).
Congratulations, Council President Hockaday. Does this mean I have to leave the seat now? I have to leave the seat now?[1079.25][1079.28](LAUGHTER).
As always, Mr. Clerk, your services are appreciated and much needed. A vital cog in the city is our very capable clerk, Abumakar Jalloh. All right. Ladies and gentlemen, Mayor Adrian O'Matt, members of the council, distinguished elected officials, including our Assemblywoman of the 22nd Legislative District, members of the judiciary, Dara A. Govan, and residents of Plainfield, thank you once again for electing me and placing your trust in me as Council President for the year 2025. It's both an honor and a privilege to continue this journey together, striving for a Plainfield that is inclusive, equitable, and resilient. First and foremost, I'd like to thank the Almighty God for the breath of life and the ability to serve. To my colleagues on the council and our community, I promise to lead with integrity, dedication, and an unwavering commitment to the well-being of all of our residents. As we enter this new year, we do so with an acute awareness of the challenges we face locally, statewide, and, quite frankly, part of a broader nation grappling with division and uncertainty. It is in this spirit that I outline the priorities that will guide our work in 2025. Just like last year when I gave my address, civility in government will be at the forefront. In times of heightened polarization, civility in our local government is not just a choice, it's a necessity. Our debates may be spirited, but they must always remain respectful. As leaders, we set the tone for our community, and I'm committed to fostering collaboration and thoughtful discourse that reflects the strength of our diversity. Second, safeguards against hostility. In the face of growing hostility from federal policies that threaten the rights of immigrants, women, and other marginalized communities, we as a progressive council must act as a safeguard. Plainfield has always been a sanctuary, a city where diversity is celebrated and where policies reflect our collective values of compassion, equity, and justice. This year, we'll continue to protect those who call Plainfield home regardless of their immigration status, gender, or economic standing. We will work to create local policies that counteract federal overreach and ensure that Plainfield remains a beacon of hope and opportunity. So look forward to this council bringing forward legislation that aims to protect its residents, such as rent control, and resolutions that affirm our support for immigrant rights. Three, transparency and accountability. Transparency is the foundation of trust, and trust is the lifeblood of governance. This council remains steadfast in its commitment to accessibility, ensuring our residents have a clear understanding of the decisions that shape their lives. Public trust is not a one-time achievement, but an ongoing responsibility, and we'll continue to prioritize open communication as the cornerstone of our work. Affordability and economic justice. We must remain steadfast in our efforts to ease the financial burdens of our residents. From affordable housing to equitable tax policies, we will prioritize initiatives that make Plainfield a city where all residents can thrive. I will continue to advocate for innovative partnerships and strategic investments that lift up our most vulnerable while maintaining fiscal responsibility. We also aim for a healthy and resilient Plainfield, and we'll build on our health initiatives by expanding access to community gardens, promoting sustainable practices, and reducing our environmental footprint. From clean air to green spaces, every step we take brings us closer to a city that prioritizes health and well-being of its residents. As leaders in a predominantly Black and Brown community, we have an opportunity and an obligation to demonstrate that progressive governance works. Whether it's providing second chances for those re-entering society, supporting the undocumented, or advocating for social justice, Plainfield can and will remain a model of grace and compassion for the nation to emulate. As we look back over the past decade, it's impossible to ignore the remarkable transformation our city has undergone under the leadership of Adrian O'Matt. Plainfield has experienced a resurgence that has touched every corner of our community. Through his vision, resilience, and tireless dedication, he has steered this city through challenges and brought us to a place of stability, growth, and opportunity. From revitalizing our downtown and improving infrastructure, getting that great tax rating that we have, and credit rating, and expanding access to resources for our residents, our mayor has laid the foundation for a stronger, more unified Plainfield. His ability to foster partnerships statewide, drive economic development, and champion progressive policies has not only turned our city around, but positioned us as a shining example of what effective leadership can achieve. At the same time, we must recognize that our work is far from finished. We will celebrate how far we've come, but we acknowledge that the challenges remain. No city is perfect, but what sets Plainfield apart is our unwavering commitment to progress and our intentionality in addressing the needs of our residents. Progress is not an accident. It's the result of vision, collaboration, and a shared commitment to making Plainfield a better place for everyone. In my observation of Plainfield over the past 20 years, the two missing ingredients in why there hasn't been more progress has been the lack of a strong and consistent leader. That has been addressed with the consistent leadership of Adrian O'Matt. In closing, let us step into this year with purpose and resolve. Let us be a council that protects, uplifts, empowers our community in the face of adversity. Let us continue to honor our diversity and demonstrate that progress is both intentional and achievable. Together, we will build on a strong foundation that we've laid, guided by civility, transparency, affordability, and grace. Together, we'll continue to move Plainfield forward. So thank you, and may 2025 be a year of growth, strength, and unity for the Queen City.[1544.37][1544.40](APPLAUSE). Okay, let's get to business. We will start with public comments, limited to items appearing under new business.
Council President.
Vice President.
Election of the Vice President first.
Oh, let's do that, then.
Let's do that.
Let's do that. I think we need a Vice President. All right. Let's open the floor for nominations for 2025 Vice President.
Council President, I'd like to nominate Dr. Darcella Sessoms.
May I have a second? Second. Okay. Are there any other nominations? Okay, nominations are now closed. Clerk, may we have a roll call?
It's a roll call on the nomination of Dr. Darcella Sessoms to serve as the 2025 City Council Vice President. Councilmembers Briggs Jones.
Yes.
Cherry.
Yes.
Graham.
Yes.
Hockaday.
Yes.
McCray.
Yes.
Councilwoman Sessoms.
Yes.
Councilman Wyatt.
Yes.
That is unanimous.
Okay, I now declare Dr. Darcella Sessoms as the 2025 Vice President.[1638.08][1638.11](APPLAUSE). Okay, so we'll now move to... Yeah, she was gonna...[1656.25][1656.28](LAUGHTER). I'm gonna give AJ his job back.[1663.62][1663.65](LAUGHTER).
Dr. Darcella Sessoms will now take the oath of office as City Council Vice President. Administering the oath of office will be Assemblywoman Linda Carter.
Repeat after me. I state your name. I, Darcella Patterson Sessoms. Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will faithfully. That I will faithfully. Impartially. Impartially. And justly perform. And justly perform. All of the duties. All of the duties. Of the office required. Of the office required. By me as City Council Vice President. By me as City Council Vice President. Of the City, of the Plainfield City Council. Of the Plainfield City Council. According to the best of my ability. According to the best of my ability. So help me God. So help me God. I do further solemnly swear. I do further solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey. And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey. And that I will bear true faith. And that I will bear true faith. And allegiance to the same. And allegiance to the same. And to the governments established. And to the governments established. In the United States. In the United States. And in this state. And in this state. Under the authority of the people. Under the authority of the people. So help me God. So help me God. You do a wonderful job.
All right, are you good to go? Make sure I look over to my left to make sure I'm on the right path, so I appreciate that. All right. All right, we're moving to public comments, limited to resolutions, I'm sorry, items appearing under new business and resolutions and motions. Total of 30 minutes has been allocated for the same. Each speaker will be given three minutes. Name and address for the record. Floor is now open. May I have a motion to close? Public comments? So moved. A second? Is anyone online? Okay, all right. All those in favor say aye? Aye. Any opposition or abstentions? Okay, public hearing is now closed. All right, are there any questions for Resolutions R. 125 through R. 425? Okay, if not, may I have a motion to approve those motions? So moved.
Second.
Okay, Clerk, roll call, please.
Roll call on Resolutions 1 through 4. Councilmembers Briggs Jones?
Yes.
Cherry?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Vice President Sessoms?
Yes.
Council President Hockaday?
Yes.
Those items have been approved.
Okay, are there any questions for Resolutions R. 525 through R. 32-25? May I have a motion to approve? So moved. Roll call, please. Thank you. Okay, you need a motion to remove that, or it's fine?
Yes, you do need a motion.
Yeah, okay, so let me have a motion to remove R...
11-25.
11-25, please.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions?
Abstaining from R. 013-25.
Okay, all right, that's a different one. But so, let's have a motion and a second on R. 5-25 through R. 32-25, noting that...
With the exception.
With the exception. Correct. So moved.
Second.
Okay, and can you note again for the record the one you're abstaining for?
R. 013-25.
Okay, thank you. All right, roll call, please.
Okay, this is gonna be a roll call on 5 through 32 with the exception of 13, which we voted on separately. Councilmembers Briggs Jones?
Yes.
Cherry?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
McCray? Wyatt?
Yes.
Sessoms?
Yes.
And Hockaday?
Yes.
That is unanimous, and Resolution 1325, Councilmembers Briggs Jones?
Yes.
Cherry?
Abstain.
Graham?
Yes.
McCray? Wyatt?
Yes.
Sessoms?
Yes.
Hockaday?
Yes.
That has been approved with an abstention from Councilwoman Cherry.
Okay, are there any questions for Resolution 33-25? Can I have a motion and a second? So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Roll call Resolution 3325. Councilmembers Briggs Jones?
Yes.
Cherry?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Vice President Sessoms?
Yes.
Council President Hockaday?
Yes.
That item has been approved.
Okay, are there any questions for Resolutions R. 34 through R. 45-25? Can I have a motion and a second? So moved.
Second.
Clerk, roll call, please.
Roll call Resolution 34 through 45. Councilmembers Briggs Jones?
Yes.
Cherry?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Vice President Sessoms?
Yes.
Council President Hockaday?
Yes.
Those items have been approved.
Okay, are there any questions for Resolutions R. 46-25 through R. 51-25? If not, I'll entertain a motion and a second. So moved.
Second.
Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmembers Briggs Jones?
Yes.
Cherry?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Vice President Sessoms?
Yes.
Council President Hockaday?
Yes.
Those items have been approved.
Okay, that concludes that. We'll now move to general public comment, which a total of 30 minutes has been allocated for all public comments, all general public comments. Come up, give your name and address for the record. Each speaker will be given three minutes. The floor is now open. Is anyone online? May I have a motion to close public comment?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Okay, public comments is now closed. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor say aye? Aye. Okay, meeting adjourned. Thank you all.